Good morning, everyone again. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Counselwoman Metols?
Here.
Counselman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Counselman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to convene today. Father God, we thank you for all of those in attendance. Father God, we thank you for the ability to bow before you, Father, and ask for your guidance, Father God, and your love, Father God, as we engage in the business of leading our city, Father God, and conducting business on behalf of the citizenry within, Father God. Father God, we thank you for the blessings, Father God. Continue to guide us and bless us through this very difficult pandemic scenario, Father God, and continue to bless this great city, Father God, and move us forward, Father God, both in areas of business, Father God, and socially, Father God. And through it all, we will give you the glory, the honor, and the praise, for it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have an update of COVID-19, and we'll ask Mr. Tanner from the EMA to come and give us an update, please. And also, he's going to expound on the resolution or the ordinance that we had today.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's good to be back together again, as the old saying goes. There's something about just being able to get together we kind of take for granted sometimes, so it's nice to be able to be back together. Our transmission rate in the county has improved now to substantial, where we had been listed in the highest category. Substantial is one level below that, so our numbers continue to improve on the transmission side of things. Over the last seven days, we've been averaging 7.14 cases being added to our total. Those numbers continue to be remarkably low over what we were seeing back through the summer, and then the greatest peak, of course, back last spring. Our positivity rate stands at 10% currently. Over the last 14 days, we've added an additional three deaths, unfortunately, which leaves our cumulative total at 500 deaths within the county. As far as our vaccinations go, these numbers are going to be countywide. Those who have completed the entire series, whether it was the two shots from Moderna or Pfizer, or the one Johnson &amp; Johnson, the number of people who have completed it is 39,934, or that's approximately 39% of the population. Those who have had at least one dose of the Moderna or Pfizer is 47,461, which is approximately 46%. So doing the math, that gives us a total of somewhere around 15% or 14,873 that have not received any type of vaccination so far. And then the schools, this report will be through October 21st. The number of cases, the Etowah City Schools reported eight, either students or faculty staff that were affected or were being held out due to an exposure and having to quarantine. Gaston City Schools through that same period shows less than five cases were added. And then the Etowah County Schools had 19 cases added that were either student staff that had to be held out due to an exposure risk or had been confirmed as positive. The last thing that I wanted to mention about the vaccination part of things, we've been getting a lot of questions over the last several weeks about getting the booster shot. The Department of Public Health put out a press release on October the 22nd, and I'm just going to read it in part. You can go to our Facebook page to be able to read the entire thing. But for individuals who received either the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine, the following groups are now eligible for a booster shot at six months or more after they had their initial series. And they've outlined four groups. Group number one is those who are 65 years of age and older, those who are age 18 and older who live in long-term care settings. The third group is age 18 and over who have underlying medical conditions. And then the fourth group is age 18 or over who work or live in high-risk settings. So to find out exactly what is in each of those groups, you can go to our Facebook page, be able to click the link. It will take you right to the Department of Public Health press release, and you can click those links and find out exactly what those groups entail. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any COVID questions. All right, so on the app, you may go ahead and address that now.
Yes.
So what we're looking at doing, the company's name is One Way App. They are a company out of Mobile. They have predominantly done most of their business in South Alabama. They're in Mobile. And what they do is they take and bring all of our incoming and outgoing information in one central application. So if you remember the Shelter Etowah app that we had, you know, for years and years, this is the next level generation of that app. And what it does is it brings in multiple data streams. So for example, we'll be able to bring into that app in real time Shelter Etowah. They'll click a button, it will automatically open up the Shelter Etowah map, showing which shelters are open, which are closed, which are pet-friendly, which are at capacity. You'll also be able to receive alert notifications for Alert Etowah. So if you signed up for Alert Etowah notifications with weather, you'll get those through the app as well. It's going to take all of our social media streams. We have a social media presence that sometimes is a challenge to monitor and mitigate, especially during high, you know, watched events. I'm not going to mention the four-letter word that starts with an S and ends in no. That's snow. But during those times, we especially have a lot of people who communicate through social media. They give us a lot more credit sometimes and give us a lot harder credit sometimes. But it's going to be able to bring all of that in. We're going to set up where traffic alerts can be given through that same app. We can program it pretty much any way that we want it to do to where everything that the citizen for Etowah County will need when it comes to public safety that the EMA provides, they'll have the one-stop shop to do it all with. It's going to be available for Android and iOS Apple devices. And that was one of the challenges, if you'll remember. That's when we had to shut down, unfortunately, Shelter Etowah because it was programmed in a language that, you know, the Apple developers no longer used. So this is going to be able to provide us all of that, plus be able to give us an additional outlet for public education and also community education. And I think that's the biggest piece of the puzzle and the biggest attribute, I guess, to seeing such a decrease in numbers is the public education has gotten better, the community education has gotten better, and people have started paying a little bit more attention. They understand it more now. So heaven forbid, if we do face another spike, that's yet another way that we can push information and education out. So I'll be glad to answer whatever questions you have on that.
Thank you. Just clear it for us.
I have just one quick question. Is this an annual agreement? Are we signing up for multiple-year term and out-of-the-gate or just renews annually?
It just renews annually. That was the biggest thing for us, Counselman Wilson. We wanted to make sure that we could test drive something and make sure that it does what it says it's going to do before we find ourselves in something long-term. All right?
Thanks, man.
Have a good day.
All right. Thank you. I know that on our agenda that Chief Reed said he didn't have a report, but are there any questions that anybody want to ask Chief Reed? Did you want to?
No, we only had two PUIs last week. Our call volume is still up. It has nothing to do with the PUIs, but I have nothing to report.
All right. So that's good.
That is good.
That's great.
We will continue with our agenda today. We have, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the city council meeting that was held on October the 19th.
Slow move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of October the 15th through the 21st.
Slow move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
At this time, I call on Mrs. Rosser, Mr. Kerry Payne, and Mr. Nick Hall.
Good morning. This is an exciting day for us and a couple of our citizens here in our city. As you are well aware, on July the 20th, we started the Vaccinate Gaston Incentive Program, which ran from July the 20th to October the 15th. During that time, we had 1,656 citizens of Gaston that participated in our program, which we do consider that to be very successful. From that number, we had six individuals, because we had announced that for every 500 people we had vaccinated, we would do a drawing for $5,000, two drawings for $5,000. So we have six individuals this morning that are going to be awarded. We drew last Tuesday, and they're going to be awarded $5,000 from the citizens of, City of Gaston. These are ARP funds, but we're very excited for these individuals today. So when I call your name, if you'll please come forward. The first one is Mr. Isaiah Light.
If you don't, just look right here for me. Go one, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I have to say, during this time, it was my privilege to get to know Mr. Light, you know.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Second individual is Mr. Timothy Thacker.
All right, y'all, look over here. Go one, two, three.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
The third one is, and excuse me if I mispronounce your name, but it's Elia Gaspar.
If you'll look over here. One, two, three.
Next, we have Mr. Donald Hope. Our last individual was a young man that I think is only 12 years old, if I remember correctly. So this is a big day for him, Noah Elijah Spears.
Count three. One. There we go. Here we go. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mom, you better at least let him buy a PlayStation 5 with that thing. Or you put the rest of it in the college fund.
At this time, we have a proclamation, and if the mayor would join Counselman Cannon,
and they go to the podium, there's a proclamation to be presented.
If Marion Wise and his family would come up, please. If y'all want all his family to come up too, please, if you will. This is an honor and a great day to stand before y'all and stand before Marion. Me and him have been friends, he's been friends with my family for probably over 50 years. I know him and my father worked together in Parks Department, also up here in C.H.A. they work together. You won't find a better man than Marion Wise. And all the time I've been at the city, I've known Marion. I've never heard anybody say a bad word about him, anything the other way about him. He was in supervision. Everybody always loved him in supervision. He's just a good man. I mean, hey, and this day is yours today, Marion. I'm going to read a little something for you. It says, "Whereas Marion Wise began working for the City of Gaston in July 1957, following in his footsteps was his father Fred Wise, who worked for the Gaston Water Works for over 30 years. Marion was the first full-time employee of the Parks and Recreation Department, working under Lawrence Weeks, a beloved supervisor who died suddenly five years later. And whereas one of Marion's most memorable duties was moving the cabin church and logged home to the Naklewa Falls Park and planned landscape to beautify the park, the building was disassembled in West Alabama and reassembled by Marion and his crew. And whereas Marion Wise recognized for his excellence work and was selected to be the Park and Recreation Director. However, after one week, he asked to be removed as director to continue working with his crew rather than having a desk job. Marion was moved to Nuisance Abatement Department in the late 1990s, and although his least favorite job was condemning houses and telling residents they had to cut the grass and clean up the yards, and despite being threatened by angry residents on several occasions, he continued his work to make the city look better for over six years of nuisance and abatement. He later transferred to Public Works Department, was in charge of maintenance for all the city buildings. From working on elevators, heating and air conditioning, electrical, anything that was broken, Marion and his crew worked to keep everything operating and going. Whereas Marion Wise retired in July 2008 with 51 years of service. He had 51 years of service to this city. His family has followed in his footsteps, with his son Joel retiring from Gaston Water Works with 40 years of service, and his daughter Lisa still working as Nutrition Center Manager with 21 years of service. Marion was married to Mary Kate for over 60 years, who died in October 2017. They have two other children, Tammy and Doug, six grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. Now for our aye, sermon guide in the name of the City of Gaston, do hereby proclaim, October 26, 2021, is the day of honor and dedication service of Marion Wise to the City of Gaston, signed and sealed and dated this 26th day of October 2021."
Would you like to tell us a quick story about some of your stuff at the city? For 51 years, I know you've got some kind of stories to tell.
I ain't got a quick one.
We've got all day in the world, because this is your day today, man.
I just couldn't have worked for a better people than City of Gaston. I've enjoyed it all these years. I enjoyed my job, and that made it a whole lot better. And I enjoyed the people I worked with, the last ones I worked with, sitting here. I enjoyed working with him so much. And we just, we just got along good, and that's, that's the best thing about a job, of getting along and enjoying the work you do. That's, that's about it. I just enjoy it.
Okay. I think we need to give him a standing ovation for 51 years to this season.
Y'all will just stay right there. Take a look right here. Count three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. All right. Thank you.
I love you, man. I love you. Appreciate you. All right.
Unfinished business, we have none. We have a resolution here renaming Whitehall Street to Whitehead Street. Residents of Whitehall Street has requested that the street be renamed in honor of Mrs. Maddie Whitehead, the oldest living original resident of the street. This is in District 3, so I'll call on Counselman Worthy to tell us more and to recognize the family in attendance.
I'm going to read the resolution, okay? It's a resolution renaming Whitehall Street to Whitehead Street. Whereas, Miss Maddie Whitehead is the oldest living original residence on Whitehall Street. And whereas, Miss Maddie Whitehead is a beloved member of the Whitehall Street community, and the residents wish to honor her. Now, therefore, being resolved by the City Council of the City of Gaston, Alabama, that Whitehead Street is hereby named as Whitehead Street. Whitehall Street is hereby named as Whitehead Street. Say that two or three times, huh? The mayor is authorized and directed to promptly prepare and erect appropriate street signs with the new name. I hereby certify that the City Council of Gaston, Alabama duly adopt this resolution at a meeting held on 10/26/21. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Those that have worked for the city or work for the city know my mom by being in her yard when she was able. And if you come by the house now, I tried to take up some of the slack and try to put flowers back in the flower beds, but I just ain't quite got it the way she had it. In the summertime, her favorite spot is on her porch. Now, if it's cool or rainy or cloudy, you won't see her on the porch. But everybody know, that knows my mom, know she loves her outside, she loves her porch, and she loves her family, and she's a God-fearing woman. And I just thank God for the community for respecting her and loving her as if she was their own mother. I thank Mayor Guiden, Counselman Worthy, I thank all of you for your time. Counselman Toles, Williams, all the rest of you, I thank you for your time. It's been a process that kind of moved quick, but once you pray and give things to God, it just comes quick. And this is, one of my sister, it's four of us left?
Four.
It's four left. My cousin, my two nieces, and one of my choir members in the back, and my-
Just have everybody stand up.
Yeah, yeah. Y'all just stand. We thank you and God bless you.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say something, add something to what he just said. I also would like to just thank everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for giving us this opportunity to honor our mother in such a way. I would also like to add that all during school, our teachers would always think that that was so cute, Whitehead on Whitehall. Now we got Whitehead on Whitehead. But nobody's in school now, so, but anyway. I just want to thank everybody. This has just been a great honor for my mom, and she's back there, she's 99 years old, and she is just a blessing to us all, and we just want to thank everybody. Thank you so much.
I have to say thank you to Ms. Ivana. We failed to mention her name, but any time we do anything like this, it's Ms. Ivana. She does it, do all the legwork. Thank you so much.
We did the presentation, so I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Slow move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing the use of the Riverfest trademark. This is for an event hosted by the River Rock Landing on October the 29th. The city accepted the trademark from the chamber in 2014, and the chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Slow move.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item, in between 12 and 13, is new business. Do we have any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I do have one item. It's a resolution approving our drainage project list. I'd like for, like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution- Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. We have department reports, committee boards, we have Judge Scott Hassel to come and talk to us this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam President, Honorable Councilman, Mr. Mayor, Department Heads. I am Etowah County's 16th Judge of Probate and I rise today for a twofold purpose. Number one is to say personally, thank you. You know, we look across our nation, perhaps even the world, and there are so many problems that plague our communities and our society as a whole and our governmental bodies and entities. We gather together and we talk about solutions, but rarely do we put feet, feet to our faith. And I'm proud to say that my cause today is mental health and early on when I shared this concern with you and perhaps more importantly, you shared your concerns with me, the City of Gaston was the very first that stepped to the plate and said, we will not go quietly into the night. We will be the first to be the tip of the spear to address these issues in our community. And so I wanted to personally say thank you. Someone asked me, why don't you just send a letter? Why don't you just send a note or a card? But I think it's important for me to come into this house to speak to you personally and from the bottom of my heart say thank you. There's no way to possibly ever contemplate or know the impact that that decision, these partnerships between the city and the county, will, the dividends that we'll enjoy in the future. But I think history will look back favorably upon the things that you have done and the things that we as a community have done. And before I forget, one of the thanks to Ms. Rosser. Folks like you behind the scenes to make all of these pieces of the puzzle work together. And there are others that don't want to be recognized. I want to say to you, thank you. You too can put your head on the pillow with satisfaction at night, knowing that lives have changed because of the hard work that you and others like you do. A quick update on the mental health program. Through a collaboration of the City of Gaston, the Etowah County Commission, the Sheriff of Etowah County and other stakeholders and partners throughout our county, by December 1st, that's our target date, we will have a team that will respond to mental health crisis, also in, address prevention issues as well as educate the public as to what mental health is, mental health crisis is and what it is not, what treatment is and what it is not. Our ultimate goal is twofold. We hope to address it on the front end and prevent mental health, mental health crises in our county and our city to keep folks from having to go to the hospital. And two, and I'm sure Chief Shaggers will appreciate this, our goal is to put the Gaston Police Department and all of our law enforcement agencies out of the mental health business. I don't think they want to be there, nor are they equipped or trained to do so. The way this will work is there is a three member team. This team will be, will consist of an outpatient coordinator, outpatient or external services coordinator. This person will make sure that when a person is identified as having a mental illness or they've experienced a mental health crisis, that we can follow up and make sure that they're getting the treatment that they need. I'll give you a brief scenario, Madam, if you'll allow me. What this scenario could perhaps play itself out in Gaston any and every day. In the middle of the night, a Gaston police officer may be called to Broad Street for a person that's throwing rocks through a window. Upon arrival, they determine that the person's not a criminal, but the person's suffering from a mental illness. That officer then is faced with an untenable challenge before them. Do they go to jail or do they go to the hospital? So many times, they have to go to jail because the resources are lacking, they were not able to get there. But let's say in this situation, they're able to get to the hospital, that acute care treatment gets them stabilized. We've had great advances in medication. So maybe the person's suffering from schizophrenia, they get that injection and it lasts for a month. What inevitably happens is this, they come before the court, I'll issue an outpatient order and they're forgotten about. Inevitably, they feel better, they don't go and get that follow-up injection. So within three to four weeks, we're right back where we started. I think you would all agree that as we look at instances that have happened across Alabama and across our nation, law enforcement is called to those situations time and time again, in so many cases, the result was not good. What we're hoping to do through that position is to make sure when that person receives that outpatient commitment, if they haven't followed up with help in two or three weeks, that we go to them and say, what can we do to help you? How can we help facilitate your continued mental health? I remember back in the old days, Councilman Williams, your mother, I'll never forget your mother, she was about this tall, she brought you in and she and I were part of a program that we did that back in the late eighties. We went throughout the community to reach out and to address from a preventive standpoint those that were suffering from mental illness. The other side is crisis intervention. We're looking to employ a social worker slash counselor and a paramedic, a team that works together so that when that family comes to the probate office, when that family calls 911, that team is the first on the scene to go there and to say, what can we do to help? How can we facilitate healing and not necessarily have law enforcement put in that unfortunate situation where they have to make those tough decisions? That is an overall view and I'm going to be respectful this time, Madam President, so I will be brief in that respect. But we look forward to sharing more about the nuances of how this program will work in the days, weeks and months to come. As I mentioned earlier, our three tiers are crisis response, prevention and education. And I will say this in closing, I am so excited that not only were you guys the first to step up, I appreciate the cooperation of the commission. I've heard nothing but favorable responses from both entities and our, and our partners across the county. And I think that speaks volumes about what we're able to accomplish when we work together and I'm so proud of you. I've been in public service over 30 years. Specifically in political, in a political world, we're either working for a politician or being one for over 20. And I have never, and I mean this sincerely, I have never been more proud and excited as I am of you guys and all of our elected leaders today. This is not going to solve all of our problems. This is a step in the right direction though. We still face shortages of beds and other resources, but working together, I think we recognize that these problems can be solved on the local level wherein we can't depend on the state to help us. I want to also thank your police chief and your fire chief. There are some things that your fire chief has shared with me and I will, I won't go into great detail, but let it suffice to say that I'm very proud of him as well. He and his department are very forward thinking and visionary in that response and I think in the weeks, months and years to come, that folks are going to be able to look at Gaston, Alabama with great pride, not being reactive, but being proactive in addressing not only mental illness, but a lot of the other issues that plague our community. Madam President, thank you for the opportunity to speak to this honorable body. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have for me.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. And it brings me back to, I guess last week I was watching Chicago Med and they had an episode like this, mental health breakdown. The young man was experiencing it and, but the doctor knew him. Then when the police arrived, you know, first thing they're going to do is what we normally do, but the doctor told him that he was a doctor, let him handle it and then he calmed him down. So this is so needed in this community because believe it or not, we have a lot of people that has a mental illness in this, in this community. And like you said, I've seen it over the years. Only thing we can do is take them, take them to jail, but they don't belong in jail. They belong, they need help. So this, this, this is a starting point.
Well, thank you, Councilman Worthy. I would go back in time, I believe the year was 1989. I was a young soldier and my squad leader, which happened to be you, chastised me out in the parking lot. I was working on a quarter ton Jeep that I thought was the most ignorant thing in the world because that maintenance had already been done a thousand times. And you came out and encouraged me and reminded me that a job worth doing was worth doing right the first time. My wife has reminded me that time and time and again, so hopefully we do it right the first time. Again, thank you, Madam President. Have a great day.
Thank you. We appreciate the compliment that you've given us and we're glad to be co-sponsors and cooperate with the commission. Thank you. At this time, we have Tara Fullford and Teresa Taylor to come and talk about our pink garbage cans, but breast cancer.
Hello, everybody. Hey, thank you guys for having us here today, inviting us out and introducing us to this great opportunity with the pink garbage cans. I've actually had seen these before and thought it was such a great idea, but never really knew how to make it happen. So whenever we got asked about this, I was really excited about it and we're excited to partner with you guys and hopefully to help save lives. That's what our, our organization is here to do. That's what we do, we're about early detection. So if you don't know about Never Surrender, it's a local breast cancer support organization. We've been in Etowah County for 10 years and what we do, we have, let me just start by telling our story, how we got started. I think that's the best way to tell a little bit about what we do. I had a friend of mine who was diagnosed with breast cancer and her husband was also diagnosed with metastatic cancer like a couple of months later and he died within a few months. They had two teenage boys in high school and they owned their own business, so their income went to nothing at that point. So they were well off beforehand, but when you are faced with all these cancer bills and things coming in, it gets really expensive really fast. So we started doing a fundraiser for her, helped her, you know, just pay for gas to and from treatment, pay for medical bills, things like that. And this is before we even started our organization. And then we had a lot of people in the community reach out to us and say, they were kind of in the same situation. They would just sit and look at all these medical bills and think, what, what am I going to do? And had people come to us that needed mammograms and couldn't afford one, but you know, were having a problem and was there someone out there that could help them? So we started out by wanting to just be the organization that looks for financial assistance, that looks for other organizations who could come and help people. And then 10 years later, we have become the organization for Etowah County, we keep everything is, stays local for people with breast cancer. So we have three programs through Never Surrender that we do. The first one's the mammogram voucher program. This program is for any man or woman in Etowah County who is diagnosed with, or no, that needs a mammogram. They can come to us, they can get a mammogram through our organization free. We partner with 211 and the Family Success Center to get that, they handle all that for us. We have the financial assistance program. That program helps anyone who is currently going through treatment. So if you're currently battling breast cancer and going through treatment, we'll pay, give you financial assistance for medical bills, housing, just different things like that. And then we have our breast self-exam classes, which we're currently in the middle of doing. We go around to all the high schools, local high schools and teach breast self-exams to the girls for early detection so that they know what their bodies are like now and if there's any changes to talk to someone about it. So far, we have raised over $170,000, or not raised, given out over $170,000 in financial assistance, paid for over 600 mammograms and taught thousands of high school girls. So any proceeds that come from these pink trashcans that we are partnering with you guys would help fund those programs. Again, thank you guys. Hopefully we can help save some lives together.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Back for originally initiating that first phone call to let us know that we can do this with, as Mike Hilton says, garbage cans, not trashcans. So we had to make sure that we get that correct. But if it were not for you and people like you in our community who is so wonderful to help us with fundraising and just bringing these new ideas to our organization, it's like every couple of months, somebody comes up with something new and it's, it's just from the wonderful citizens in the City of Gaston who, you know, makes us be able to do what we do. So we thank you very much for that. Any questions about?
Can one of y'all just explain how the process will go to, to procure one of these trashcans for, if a citizen wants to get one?
That'll be a little bit later. I believe there are some things that has to be worked out. Ms. Rosser and maybe Councilman Back will kind of elaborate on it. That's in the process, but it hadn't totally been worked out.
Okay, good deal. That's exciting.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
And one more thing, I, just my vision is to see like 10 of these in a row down a street somewhere and hopefully that just reminds somebody, hey, I need to go get my mammogram or, you know, just bring some awareness to people all throughout the year, not just October. That was the last thing I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is Robert Hunter here? If not, we'll go to remarks. Mayor, you close to the podium, do you want to have anything to say first? I always call on your last, so I'm calling on you first today.
That's okay. I'm just proud of all the things that are going on here as well as the people who do things like these ladies here and several other people in our community who step up when the time, when the time is needed for somebody to have some help and we appreciate all, all that help for everybody that does that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Reed?
Yes, ma'am. I'm seeing Marion Wise. I'll tell you what, Marion, we've known each other a long time and I'm just proud to say that I'm glad I'm a friend of his. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilman Cannon?
Yes, I'd like to echo the same as Councilman Reed said. Marion is now set to this city, he was back years ago and he still is right now. He's, he's a man of, that got this city on the move and got us going where we are today. Without people like him, we'd be in a whole different situation. Nowadays, you can't find anybody who wants to work 51 years. You barely can find them, I want to work two or three months now. I know I said that as a joke, but that's, that's really the truth. Now people just don't want to work. I don't know how they get by, but, but that's it. But we do appreciate you, Marion. I want to tell everybody, we've still got treats on Wall Street this week. It starts at five, goes to seven. We'll have two lines this week. This Thursday night, it's going to start at Railroad Avenue and go all the way down. You'll turn at Sansom Avenue and go out both ways. We've got a lot more people coming this year. Hopefully don't, we don't run out of candy like we did last year. It was a kind of a trial and error last year with COVID. We're ready this year, so we hope to see you out there, 5 o'clock, Thursday afternoon.
Councilman Worthy, I want you to be nice, so you, so you can tell your people when they call you that I was picking on you. Be nice.
First thing I want to say, this was a really good meeting, our first meeting back. We really accomplished some things for the people of the City of Gaston. And I want to thank Councilman Cannon for letting the drainage project come up today because this is long overdue and I'm going to just name some of the drainage that may get fixed, that will get fixed in District Three. On Malone Street, that's been a problem there for a long, long time. Henry Street and the main one is on North 11th there between West Millian and Tuscaloosa Avenue. That's the big one that been like that for, I'm going to say, my whole life. So, and then Tuscaloosa Avenue and Alice Holler Road. So we, we're really going to do some things. So to the engineer, to the council, to the mayor, thank you so much. You know, I don't like saying what we're going to do because over the years I've said it and it didn't happen, so we voted on this, so now maybe to get done. So thank you so much. Also, to Ms. Maddie Whitehead, congratulations again. It's well deserved. 99 years, that's a long, wonderful life. That is a long life. So God is really good. So thank you to Tony for doing what you do and the whole family there. And also, what's something else I was going to say, I believe I'm going to just leave it at that. Thank you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Councilman, I just saw Mr. Hunter come in. Do you want to speak? Your name and address, please.
Robert Hunter, 1109 63 Gaston, Alabama. I was just coming in to ask about an update on the Human Resources Committee and because it's been over three months since we last met and if there needs to be a recon, sorry, I meant to say consolidation where we just put it under one person, that'd be also completely fine. If need be, I can take it over myself.
That would be a conversation I believe that you could have offline with Councilman Williams and Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Y'all have a good one.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I'll, I'll echo the sentiment that was shared before regarding the, the tenor of today's meeting. It has really been a good meeting and I really appreciate those who are in attendance today. Do want to say once again, congratulations to our two honorees. We really, really appreciate what you stand for and it, it's just an honor to be able to, to recognize you today. So, so again, thank you so much. Thank you. And again, I, you know, I'll, I'll just reiterate the things that we've covered today. You know, drainage projects, Heath, Williamson and the engineering department, it's a lot of work. If those of you, those of you who may not be as familiar with drainage, and I wasn't before 2010, we have a, a monster of a drainage situation in the city. Now that, I mean, there are a lot of cities that are struggling with drainage, but you know, ours is somewhat exacerbated because know, ours is somewhat exacerbated because of topography issues and because, over the years, politics got in the way of, of, of how we did drainage. And so, the goal, the goal now is to move forward, as Councilman Worthy spoke of earlier, to move forward with some, every district's got some meaningful projects that they'll, that they'll be pushing and moving forward with, and we're excited. We're really excited about that. Judge Hassel, thank you for what you're doing, for this being your brainchild relative to the mental health team. I think that is a, definitely a move in the right direction, and it, it just reiterates what the city of Gaston's always, at least since I've been an elected official, I've watched the city extend the olive branch and, and partner with, with other city agencies time after time after time. And so, this is just one more step in the city continuing to do that, and, and we're always excited to do it. Breast cancer awareness, obviously, we're in the midst of October, and, and it's important, it's important that, that we continue to raise awareness relative to breast cancer. And, you know, it, it often gets brought up nowadays that it's not just women, it's, it's men as well, that, that, that can be diagnosed with breast cancer. So, thank, thank you to all of you guys that are on the, on the, on the ground, on the ground level, and, and on the front lines, helping us to fight this and helping to raise awareness. Thank Councilman Back, you know, I don't think it can be said enough, this was largely his brainchild, to, to reach out to an agency that could support. So, there's more information to come as it relates to that, and I appreciate just kind of the forward-thinking as it relates to that. And lastly, I'm so proud of, of my city as it relates to Vaccinate Gaston and that effort. You know, you know, let's throw out why people might have been motivated to participate, participate. They participated, and that's the important thing. And we were in a position where we could actually reward those to some degree who did participate, and, and to see Noah and his sister standing here just kind of warmed my heart. I mean, I needed that. I don't know about y'all, but I needed that. I needed to see that. So, so again, thanks to all of you that, that helped to carry that out, to help to make it happen, to, to help, help to make it a reality for these folks, and, and it was great to see that happen for them right before the holidays, you know? Now, they've got some, some holiday money to spend, and in a very difficult time, it's good to see people get blessed with something like that right before they may need it. So, so again, thanks to everybody, and that's all I've got.
Councilman Back?
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to kind of echo what everybody's been saying. It has been a good day at City Hall, it's been a good day for Gaston, it's been a good day for Etowah County. Gosh, where to start? It's just Vaccinate Gaston program was great. It was good to see the families receive their, their check of $5,000, and, and I agree about Noah and his, his twin sister. I didn't know we had a twin, but I'd love to hear that conversation on the way home, on the way home. Are you going to share that with your sister? So, that's, I'm sure that'll be fun to hear. Judge Scott Hassel, great vision on the mental health program. He discussed that. He and I had a lunch one day, and that program is done out west in some other cities, and he brought that, has brought that to Etowah County. I think it's going to pay dividends over and over again. That will be stories that, that we'll continue to hear. And Ms. Matty Whitehead, congratulations to you, 99 years old and an icon, not only on what is now Whitehead Street, but I think you're a Gaston icon. I can just tell by the comments and by the smiles, you're that lady that everybody wants you to be their mama. So, add me to that list, okay? My mama's in heaven, so I, I want to claim this, Ms. Matty Whitehead. And also, to our 51-year employee, gosh, what a, what a record, and, and I can tell by looking at the mayor's face and, and Mike Hilton's face, you are very well-respected and loved by those that know you, by your peers, and that's your true, that's the true test. You know, we've never met before, I can tell you're a great guy, but the ones that know you, Johnny Cannon and people like that, and Ben Reed, they, they sure love and respect you. So, that, that just speaks volumes for you, sir, and thank you for all your service to the city. Sure do appreciate that. And then Tara Fullford and Teresa Taylor, thank y'all for what y'all do. It's an amazing amount of money that you guys are, have given out to people that are in need, that, that need that service, that need to have a mammogram, that need to go to the doctor, that maybe needs help with the co-pay, that, you know, oftentimes, that's what stops people from receiving adequate health care, and then they don't have a happy ending. And so, thank y'all for what y'all do. We're proud to partner with, with you guys, and there'll be more details coming in the following week or two about how to get the cans and, and things like that. It's, it's going to be relatively easy, and I too look forward to seeing the streets lined with pink garbage cans, and, and maybe that does serve as a healthy reminder for people to do what they need to do. And, but just thank y'all for what you do. I'm sure you put in tireless hours, and, because I know you have regular jobs and you do this, so thank y'all. Thank y'all very much for, for what you do for our entire community. It's, it's, it's very exciting to be a small part. And I guess with that, Madam President, just want to thank Lisa, and if I go to miss the names, Carrie and Mike for helping, and I also spoke with Frankie and the mayor about the pink garbage cans, you know, there's a, there's a way to go about doing that, and everybody was just, it was easy. It was easy. No, nobody, everybody wanted to go, yeah, let's do that. How, how can we do it, and how can we make it work? So, it's just everybody pulling together. So, maybe we're at the start of a new season, you know? We're, we're all working together and getting along, and, and, and things are going well. And speaking of a new season, last but not least, and I'll brag to my fellow council member, Councilman Wilson, y'all, Friday night at River Rocks Landing, which is right down the street here, you might know it, we're, at Christmas, there's always a bunch of lights on the water over there. That's River Rocks Landing, and Riverfest is coming back there this, this Friday, and the acts that are coming, we have one coming from California, and then we have a local guy that's, well, he's, he's from here, he's from Geraldine, he claims Gaston, and he doesn't live here all the time, but he has family here, and he is just an unbelievable guitarist, and the Gaston Times today did a great article. I think, Donna, you may have done that? No, you did? Okay, well, I'll give you credit anyway. It was a very, very good article, and it tells all the groups that he's played for. I can't remember all of them, but it's, every one you're going to know and recognize. And then our local talent, John Player and, and his group, will be performing. Y'all, this is something that's really, really good, and if, if you haven't got your tickets and if you're not going, I would encourage you to get tickets and go. It's going to be a fabulous event, and it's going to be a beautiful location, just a great way to end the week. And, and then also, last but not least, I don't want to embarrass my friend, Harry Butler, but I want to recognize Harry Butler. Harry Butler came today to, he, he wanted to see Ms. Matty Whitehead, and I've known Harry just about my whole life, and graduated high school with one of his daughters, and just a, just a great guy, and I think you said you hadn't been here in about maybe 40 years, and it's just, it's just been a while, but don't, don't wait so long to come back, okay? Come back, we, we do this just about every Tuesday, so would love, would love to have you. But it's all, it's good to see Harry. Harry's got that great voice, y'all, that great radio voice. It's just, he's just a wonderful guy. I love reading his columns in the paper. He has a lot of gifts, and, and he uses them, and quite frankly, uses them for the Lord. So, thank you, Harry. Appreciate you, appreciate your friendship. That's all. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, Councilman Wilson?
First of all, thank you, Councilman Back, for the comments about Riverfest. I won't, I won't use this as a pulpit since I'm involved in that project, but I do hope y'all come out, and I hope it's a good time. But I want to say thank you specifically to the legal department, between getting the trademark things worked out and the Alabama DOT land use agreements, there's so much that goes into doing these things that people don't realize, the Public Works Department with barricades and things like that. It's just a good community effort, and the proceeds are going to go to benefit Couso River Keepers and Downtown Gaston, Inc. So, it's, it's got something that hopefully will move the ball forward around here. So, thank you to Erin, specifically in the legal department. I don't know if she's in here, but there was a lot of last-second paperwork that had to be filled out, and she did a phenomenal job. Congrats to the Vaccinate Gaston winners, 5,000 smackers is a lot of money. I hope y'all get to spend it the way you want to. Specifically, I will say, Ms. Rossar said that Noah's grandmother said that money was going in a savings account. I will again advocate for him to be able to buy a PlayStation 5, and then the rest of the money go into a savings account. Ms. Whitehead, congratulations. I don't think I will ever have the opportunity to live on a street that's named after me. I have a pretty common last name, so I might move to Wilson Street somewhere, but it's not going to be named after me, more than likely, so that's a tremendous honor. Congratulations. One simple thing about, we've all talked about this drainage project list. I do want to be clear, this $11 million project that we talk about with ARP fundings, this is the master list. Every one of these projects will still be bid out and come before the council for approval on a one-by-one basis. So, just keep in mind, we didn't just check one big box and there goes the $11 million. We will still follow bidding procedures for every single one of these, so we'll all get to review these individually as they come up. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Judge Hassel, thank you for the comments about the mental health program, and this kind of feeds into Mr. Hunter's comments about the Human Relations Advisory Committee. The H R A C, as most of you know, was, was, came to fruition in an attempt to try to address some of the issues that minorities in this community face, and to try and make it a more equitable place for all of us to live. And I will take the criticism from Mr. Hunter that we probably haven't done the best job we could do at getting this thing all the way to the finish line. I mean, even though we had COVID and, and all of that, we still probably could have done a better job, and I appreciate you holding me accountable for that. I don't have any, I don't have any response to that criticism, it's valid. The one thing I will say is I ask everybody in this community to realize, even though we haven't finalized a report and brought it to this council, that mental health program that Judge Hassel just spoke about, and I'm, Ms. Hunter, I don't know if, I don't believe you were in the room yet, that is a direct result of the conversations we had in the Human Relations Advisory Committee. You guys elevated that conversation in this community, and this city responded. They put funding in the budget for mental health officers to try, they, the police departments went through additional diversity training, additional use of force training. There have been multiple things that came out of those original meetings that we are seeing come to fruition every day here. So, I just ask that you don't give up on us, and certainly you and I can speak about, I would, I would absolutely love the help. People don't realize this is a one-day-a-week job, and it's not a one-day-a-week job. It's, I, I spend seven days a week working on matters for city council, and I still have another job and a livelihood I have to provide for my family. So, I welcome the help and welcome the assistance, and we'll certainly get together after this, and, and you being able to help us get that to the finish line and make some final recommendations to the council. Never Surrender, awesome job as always. That's a, we've worked together on a personal level for a long time, Tara, and I've always been impressed with what you guys have been able to accomplish, and with Kent bringing this to the table, it's just another great creative way to bring awareness. So, continue doing what you're doing. Mr. Wise, congratulations. It's crazy to think that when you started working at the city of Gaston, I was negative nine years old. So, so that's an impressive career, to say the least. I certainly haven't accomplished as much in my 41 years as you have in your 51 years with Gaston, so thank you, and to your son, to have a, to have a career with 51 years and then have a son who comes right behind you with 41 years. I mean, talk about commitment by a family to a city. That's, that's unbelievable. Thank you for everything. That's all I have, Madam President.
I'd just like to reiterate what everybody else has said, and especially to the Whitehead family, congratulations, and also to just want to thank the city council members, the city staff, and all of the, everything that you all have done to make this meeting and the meetings that we have a productive meeting and a positive meeting, and so I want to say thank you to council members and to the city staff, to the mayor. We had a good council meeting. Upcoming council meetings will be in person from this point on unless something changed from the state wise. So, if nothing else, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Sub moving.